We're live. Welcome everyone to Finance Committee Meeting, December 9th. At 6:30, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Crimer.
Here.
Mr. Michelson.
Present.
I haven't changed yet.
Exactly. I put forward a motion to adopt the agenda as posted.
Second?
All those in favor?
I just have a quick question on the agenda. Under new business pension pickup strategy for Obers and OP and F, is that specifically only talking about the, the, not the police, but the, the, the general employee pension?
Correct.
Okay.
It's both.
And while we're ready, I've discussed.
But that, that agenda item is Obers and OP and F. Would you like to remove the OP and F one? Is that what I'm understanding?
OP and F was passed, so it's irrelevant.
Do you see a check over there?
Check out?
Yeah.
You have a bracket instead of a?
No.
Yeah.
You have to take a bracket.
I don't have a bracket.
Okay.
Okay, I have a bracket. You want it?
I'm with.
Um, I take that as a yes for having the agenda.
Yeah, I vote on it.
As modified.
As modified. Alright.
Who was the first, I'm sorry?
David made the motion, I seconded, and Zach had it.
Do we get new members now, or?
After your counsel.
I will make it my mentor counsel. He is welcome to join your conversation, your deliberations, but what I've been told by legal counsel is that, he can't vote until I have made a statement.
Okay. That's that. A motion to approve the, um, finance minutes from 11:25. 11:25. I put forward the motion to approve. Do I have a second? A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I would like to ask, um, Mr. Prinoff to, uh, give us the financial fact of review.
It would be my pleasure. Okay, for the month of, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, for the month of fiscal, of November fiscal year 24, the village checked my bank balance of $3,358,426.60. Of this amount, $168,818.24 can be found in the village's primary checking accounts. And $1,517,206.22 can be found in the village's high interest savings account with the third bank. Remaining balance resides in other village dedicated funds. The village generated $76,885.81 in general fund income taxes. Rita collections are approximately 48.5% lower than November of the previous year. For the year, the village has collected $1,022.51 in general fund income tax receipts. This reflects an approximate 1% trend increase over year-to-date fiscal year 23. That is a significant decrease from the last time I gave this report. The last time I gave this report, it was about a seven or eight. Previous to that, it was about 20% higher. November and December were really bad months for us in terms of income tax collections. I did look into what it was in terms of Rita, and we get reports would give us, uh, the, the, the most significant changes. And it's, it's a, it's a decrease in some companies. Other companies, a significant amount of that money comes from profit, net, net profit taxes, which either we may have not received or were lower this year. And that's just a normal ebb and flow of business. Now, compared to our budget, we're still sixty, uh, almost $100,000 above what we budgeted for in terms of income tax receipts. Right, our, our budget put in for $925,000. So we're still well above that, which is kind of where I sit. You know, every year, we always under-budget, knowing that we may be higher than that, right? But, but it's just compared to the year, year-to-date last year. It's not, it's not where I would want to see us. Village received second by annual dispersment of real estate taxes from Hamilton County. That's not going to change the homestead rollback again. Combined amounts, $1,973,508.27. That's 7% increase over year-to-date fiscal year 23. Again, also a significant increase and more than we had originally budgeted for. So between those two, the general fund is doing very well. As receipts, village received $203,711 in general fund receipts. This number is $15,978.79 less than November fiscal year 23. Again, significantly due to Rita collections. The star fund earned $6,563.45. High interest fifth-third savings account earned $5,530.86. Again, this is, when you go year-to-date, it's $11,000 a month that we were not earning last year. We were earning about, per month. Now, last year, I, I should correct myself. By this time last year, we had the, the star fund, but not the fifth third. So about six, it's about $5,550 that we weren't making last year. But two years ago, right, none of that existed. Uh, the top five pays for the month in payroll, your Mark Silverton, Ronkey Container, Ohio Police and Fire, and the Jefferson Health Plan. Total, total bill, total village general fund appropriations spent for the month is the amount of $187,271.71. This figure is $113,284.85 more than November fiscal year 23. Mostly due to adjustments in the 2023, in 2023 concerning DPA payments originally made from the general fund instead of fire levy. If you recall, when we got, um, maybe you would not recall, this happened before you all were here. Um, but, you know, Mr. Fisher was the only one, uh, who was here at that time. The original, uh, fire, fire levy was not really set up in a way that, um, it, it originally was set up where we did not have the money. Tax receipts came in March, and we were already paying, um, from January. So in previous years, the general fund discovered it, and we, we changed appropriations. Appropriate accounting does require that if a fund is meant to pay for something and the money comes later, then if fund advance transfer happens, which we discussed last time. So this is nothing new, but this is what it looks like when all of a sudden spend is $187,000 more than the previous year. Well, that's because in the previous year, it had been reduced so significantly from that, from that change. Village had 14 outstanding payments totaling $24,674.71. Village administration will continue moderate appropriations and spend and make any adjustments deemed necessary. Any questions?
Uh, yes. Uh, mostly just a question around, so this general fund appropriations, and we talk about in the first paragraph here, where our November, sorry, I'm just, our November is, um,
Give them a raise.
Did we approve any payments? Or basically, did we approve any additional spending, uh, out of the budget where the, um, income tax receipts, we had projected those to be at higher, like 20%, 7% all of that. Do we approve any additional spending?
No.
No.
No. Those, again, all spending that we, that, that we, uh, have spoken, spoken about previously, anything that council has approved, has always assumed that the income taxes would be at about $925,000. The fact that we're over $1 million at this point means that we're in the black by that much just from income taxes.
I don't know.
Any other questions? Okay. Have you moved on to the next item?
Yeah, so the next item will be discussion regarding the cell tower. We have a cell tower in our park that brings in some money to the village that we rent, lease the property. And Eric will go through the discussions that we have regarding, um, renewal of that or potential sale and what the options are, which approach the village should take for the future. Go for it.
Thank you. So I'll give you a brief overview. Most of this is stuff that I discovered, let's say, three months ago. Um, but when speaking to the specific companies, trying to understand exactly what everyone is offering, I want to make sure that the village is getting the most bang for our buck, um, and making sure that we're maximizing revenues. Um, so there's three different kinds of leases that we can, uh, that we, we can, um, provide. So the village does not own the cell tower. American Tower owns the cell tower, it's their equipment, but it's our land. So we give them permission to operate their cell tower on our land. Give them what's called an easement. Now, there are companies out there who are constantly trying to get us to sign with them, that they'll negotiate our lease for us, and they'll front us all this money, but then we lose our monthly, our monthly, our annual revenues. Monthly revenue, which currently is at about $17,000 a month, a year, excuse me, $17,000 a year, with a 3% escalation clause. That's a 30-year contract, which we are currently in year, uh, year 21. 20 or 21. Yeah. So, so the cell towers, excuse me, these, these other companies have been constantly trying to get us to sign what's called a permanent easement, which essentially allows them to choose who, who occupies the cell space. And they'll give us something to, to about $300,000. And we lose all rights of granting that easement, meaning we lose all of that income permanently. So there was a company called Everest, which had originally reached out to us and made that offer. And I, I looked at that and said, well, this is, this is pretty fishy, because there are other companies out there who are offering less money, but they're only 15, 20, 30-year contracts. But again, a lump sum. So another company called Landmark Dividend, which you've probably seen, seen those on, on billboards all over any of them. They all said, I mean, very common, they say landmark, it's a, it's a big company. Um, they're willing to give the village about $170,000, which would be for 15 years of receipts. 15 years of receipts is closer to $370,000. So we could get $179,000 upfront, and let's say if we would invest it, 7% over the next 15 years, then maybe we double up, maybe we get back to where we were. But that doesn't really help us, right? It gets rid of our revenue stream, and in all likelihood, um, you know, we're not investing that money. We can't guarantee a 7%. It doesn't make sense. So I said to them, unless there's really a significantly higher investment towards the village, that also probably does not pay sense. The third option, which I do believe makes the most sense, is to continue with American Tower. And American Tower has offered us that if we sign with them another 30-year lease, which we currently have, again, we're year 21 of a 30-year lease, so they will give us 20, uh, $15,000 for signing that 30-year lease. That means they don't have to take down their tower, they don't have to find a new location. They have also given us the option to expand. Now, our current, I don't know how many people are aware of this, but the current situation in the park, uh, the current orientation of the fence is actually about 20, 19 to 20 feet away from the property line. So in order to expand, they would have to use about 1,200 square feet, which I said to them would only be even, I mean, I, I don't understand why else we would do it if it would take away current park space. But if it's behind the fence, which is already unusable space, that might be, that might be an intelligent use of space. So they would give us $10,000 for doing that. And then if they bring on another tenant, which currently the only tenant here is Verizon, hence probably why Verizon is excellent, right? They would bring either AT&amp;T or T-Mobile, or maybe both, right? Would require 1,200 square feet, I believe, per tenant. But again, can all fit behind the fence. So that would be, uh, that would be an increase in revenue where we get 50% of that contract. So whatever that is, right, if we're getting $17,000 now, that's one contract where we're getting 50%. So it would be maybe double what we're currently get, or, again, I don't know exactly how the breakdown is. I don't know if all of the money we're getting is directly from Verizon, or if it's, some of it is from American Tower, some from Verizon. That is not clear in the contract, but I don't know how they, how they work that. Um, but the point is that this would be a significant opportunity for us to gain another, let's say, $10,000 to $15,000 a year in revenue, plus they would give us $25,000 upfront just to set this up. So I wanted to put it on your radar, I really wanted to have a piece of legislation in front of you tonight, but Rob pointed out, I think very astutely, that we want to make sure that whatever's in that contract specifies the area where they're allowed to, to expand to, which I had requested that, um, and, and it's, it's, it's still being researched. So that should be in the January meeting, but I just wanted to put this on your radar, that this would be something, um, up and coming. And if there are any specific objections, that you should think about them now, so that by the time we get to January, if that is something that, that we need to discuss, we should discuss it then. If not, we should, my thoughts are it makes sense to move forward with this contract, but I'm not, I'm not pushing it that we have to get it done right away. We have at least four years before they start looking for other locations to remove this tower and then relocate. So not, not critical we make a decision now, but $25,000 for signing is a nice bonus, so.
Quick question?
Yes.
Um, you may or may not know, but, um, if we were, you know, we would be putting it, you know, behind the fence in that area if we were able to do it. Who would be responsible for clearing that area and, and preparing it for development?
That would be up to the vendor.
That would be up to the company.
Yeah.
That would be done.
Yeah. Meaning if they would tell us that, that they need us to clear it, uh, that would have to be, that would have to be spelled out very clearly in the contract negotiations.
Yeah.
And this, again, these are, these are specifics that Rob is looking into and will, I mean, I, I brought the, the topic up to him, but, uh, but I've asked them specifically, like, what's, you know, what's going on with the, with the, with clearing that area? Because there's a bunch of trees and bushes and trubs and all kinds of stuff. It, as of now, the assumption is that they would do that, we would not.
Yeah.
In a position to do that.
Could you speak to them about paving the, the driveway here for their trucks? What did they say to them?
They said, we're happy to fix any damage that our trucks might do.
How do you damage stone?
No, meaning they're not interested in paving. And if there's any damage that their trucks do currently in the current situation, then they're happy to fix it. When I mentioned to them that I was getting these offers of, you know, $170,000 upfront, I said, you know, obviously I understand it's not the same. She said, look, this is what, this, this is what makes sense. You know, our business allows up to $25,000 for this. It, it doesn't make sense, the numbers don't add up once you start, you know, making it bigger than that. $25,000, if we want to use that money to pave that, we could do that, right? But obviously, we would want to pave it strong and reinforced enough that it can maintain their trucks, but that's on us.
So at some point in time, we're going to want to pave that, right? Because that's part of the walking path. We just need to figure out what the engineering looks like and put, attach a price to it.
Yeah, if there's any, if, if we do get another lease, um, you know, add another lease on for this, for an additional site, I would love it, love it if we could earmark some of those initial funds to actually finish the walking path in the park. That would be great.
It'd be good if we could also coordinate that with a, a hard master plan?
I mean, I think, I think that would have to go hand in hand.
Yeah. Are there any other companies that would want to lease the property for another two towers besides American Towers?
I haven't found one. Again, I'm, I've looked around, I've reached out to ones who've reached out to us. I, I don't, I don't see, again, I don't know what these, I don't know what all of these companies are. It's not something that I'm an expert at. Um, if you hear of other self-loan companies, obviously, you know, self-loan towers. Uh, American Tower is by far the biggest, from what I understand. And every other company that I've spoken to, they're like, oh, you're working with American Tower? Oh. Like, kind of, they're the big boys, and they, they just push people off, and they make it difficult for other people. So again, I don't, I don't want to, like, throw them under the bus, but, I mean, they're just, no one else can compete with them in terms of these kinds of contracts. All they can do, and what, what American Tower told me is, all these other companies generally do is, they buy the contracts, and then they sell it back to American Tower. And it's just, that's their way of making some money in the middle. So I asked, I said, oh, so maybe you could give us a little bit more, you know, so that it's worth up? And they're like, this is giving you more. She was, she was not so interested in, uh, in, I mean, 25 is already more than what we're currently getting.
Right, but they thought, they know they have five years, though.
Yeah, no, they have nine years.
Yeah.
And four years before they start making those decisions on, say, where are we going to relocate? And then she said, it's five years after, like, when there's five years left.
So the new tower would be an addition, would be 10,000 upfront, an additional 10,000 upfront, and how much annually?
Not a new tower. It would be a new tenant on the existing tower.
Oh, a new tenant. Well, so it would be an additional 10K upfront, like signing?
It would be an additional 50% of whatever the contract is that American Tower signs with them. So they can't provide those numbers because that changes constantly, right? But my assumption, based on what we currently have with Verizon at, right now, $17,328 for 24, with a 3% escalation clause, is going to be around, let's say, $10,000 to $15,000. I would pick minimum, but.
Additional.
Right.
So there's a couple of points that counsel might find interesting to know. That is the tallest point in Hamilton County, in the center of the county. So that makes this particular tower attractive for companies to continue with us. The other thing that, um, I think it's important for you to know is that counsel has debated in the past whether or not we should actually sell that asset. And it was something that had always been turned down just because of the way the market continues to fluctuate, the technology has advanced. So I think continuing with a lease is in our best interest of this, but, um. Agreed. I, I think also, and I'm not desperate for the money right now. And for us to have a steady income is much more worth it than getting a lump sum upfront. And, uh, and then, uh, losing our rights to the property. Having that said, um, we, uh, I think we should give our blessing to the administration to continue these talks and, uh, see what, what the final product come out from it. The question is if we should jump on it now, or should we wait? We might get, is there a possibility we'll get more money if we wait, or it doesn't work that way?
I mean, there's always a possibility to get more money if we wait, but I, you know, I don't know how that, uh.
There's also the possibility they back out.
Right, well, so that's one thing that Rob pointed out, is that it, because of the change in technology, it may become totally obsolete, you know? If, um, using Starlink as one example, or if all of a sudden everything goes to Starlink, so you don't need towers anymore. Right, I mean, I think, right? I don't really know how the technology works. But if all of a sudden that tower goes obsolete, so that's, that would be a motivation to say, hey, you know, let's just sell the perpetual lease to Everest and get $317,000 and just say goodbye to that property. I don't know that that makes sense necessarily. I think that's taking a big risk on a lot of unknowns.
Also, say we do get, uh, you know, satellite, everything, we could, if we still have rights to that land, we could repurpose that land for something else we want to do. I'd rather not, you know, give a perpetual lease.
Right, if you, if it was a perpetual easement, we don't use it. They, they go, they go leases, we would just give a perpetual easement, which essentially is saying goodbye to the land.
Yeah.
Because we can't use it for anything if we impede that ability.
Yeah.
There's also the issue that if the technology does get bad and they don't use it anymore, we are more in control of the lease of that property and having it removed, rather than it just being a monument to.
Well, Ameri, again, American Tower owns the tower. So if there is no more tenants, and we don't want to give them a lease anymore, then the tower, they would take the tower. It just becomes.
But if they take the land too, we can't boot them if they close down.
Right, if they have that perpetual easement, that's correct.
Okay. So, uh, what's the?
So the cases? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see a final contractor proposal and go from there. I mean, there's nothing to do until we get a proposal.
Right, no, this is more just to, to put it on your radar, to expect by the, by the January, hopefully by the January meeting, to have this written up as a contract for legislation, um, that would be the village agreed to this lease extension. If that is something that the village can, would like to do.
Cool. Alright, cool. Next, um, discussion regarding purchase of a police vehicle.
So we did already discuss this, but I think there was a request to see more, um, the updated vehicle, uh, vehicle summary.
All the vehicles.
From this Crimer.
Remind that you wanted to discuss this?
Uh, well, this came up in the last, in the last council meeting, when there was discussion for the, um.
Correct, I think there was a legislative memo, and there was not clarity, because I was not at the October.
Right.
Finance committee meeting, and there was uncertainty about whether or not that was approved or not.
So that was, that was, last time that was talking about, um, pensions, as I recall. Um, but then, within pensions discussion was the broader, what are the different things that are happening all at once? Um, which I think also Mr. Michelson asked about, so.
I think that was just what Michelson asked, I hope.
Okay, so.
At least I have an ask.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was.
I think I reiterated what it was from the meeting minutes.
Okay. Um, so in any case, that's also provided the vehicle summary, which does include the sale of 118, which was the final Durango to go, which I'm very, very happy to see has gone. Um, we got $21,000 for that car, which is pretty phenomenal. Um, which, I mean, again, anytime you sell an asset like that, if it's, if it's still worth something, you can't complain. So the, um, the, the current, um, uh, this should be, this is on your, in your legal memo for tonight, uh, is the request to purchase a Chevy Tahoe, which was found through Ohio Buys. There's a dealership in, um, in the Cleveland area, which had one, I believe it was a return. It's still a brand-new truck, it's just not, you know, it's not as shiny, I guess, I don't know. Maybe somebody, like, wiped the tissue on the window.
So.
So that's, yes.
Just so I understand, we currently have nine police vehicles.
True.
Correct. Plus the admin focus.
Yes.
And four service vehicles.
Correct.
And.
With that four service vehicles, we do not have four service vehicles. The fourth one is added there because that was purchased, has not yet been delivered.
Okay, but we are.
And 213 will be sold once it's, once the new one is delivered.
Okay, so then we will be down to three?
Correct.
Uh, but we currently assets on the books, four. And the ask is to add one more police vehicle to make that 10 police vehicles, one admin, and then a wash of three service vehicles. Correct?
That sounds right, I'm sorry, I don't have, I didn't pull up, but it's, my website's not working right now, so I don't have.
I know, there's issues in that.
That sounds good.
How many police officers do we have on staff?
13.
So we're like, almost a one-for-one. That feels like a lot.
You're, so we, those cars aren't all patrol vehicles.
We have two taken homes, the K-9.
Yeah. And those were bought with, uh, with drug funds, not tax dollars. So my opinion is we should look at those vehicles.
We still paid for that.
Right.
So currently, there are four frontline vehicles. There's 216, 122, 120, and 124. 124 is a new truck, uh, which replaced 118.
Could you give me those numbers, man? Sorry, 216, 124, 122, and 122?
It's all in there where it says tag. It says 216, 122, 120, and 124. Those are all of the.
Those are our patrol vehicles?
Those are the patrol vehicles, yeah. Now, the.
So what is this Frontier?
That is for, so that is for the, uh, that's an unmarked unit, which is for the, um, the employee, which is, uh.
It's a task force vehicle.
Assigned to the drug task force.
I heard that officer retired.
Or will be in the near future.
Right.
Do we have a plan? He's not retired? Uh, she said she thought that he retired, that's not true.
Oh, he is retired, he has not yet.
Correct.
So what's the plan for that once that is?
That's a, that's a drug fund vehicle, so, um, uh, if we sell it, that money goes back into the federal drug fund.
Right, pretty much, it, it, it's something to be aware of. I believe it's half of the police vehicles and maybe more than half have been purchased either entirely or partially with drug fund money. Uh, the Frontier was purchased with the drug fund money, I believe half of the K-9, is that correct?
Yes.
Half of the K-9, the Avenger, the Assistant Chief, and Chief vehicles, so that's five out of the current 10 places.
Assistant Chief.
I'm sorry, Pat, I wrote it as Assistant Chief. It's the captain vehicle, um, have all been, um, those are all paid for out of the drug fund. So any of those that get sold, the money gets returned to the, um, the money gets returned to the drug fund.
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying we're selling these, I'm just trying to understand where these.
To keep it straight.
So the Frontier that's marked here, that is our unmarked vehicle for the DEA officer, the Avenger, that one doesn't have anything listed, that's not a patrol. What is that for?
It's a surplus vehicle that we're trying to sell.
Oh, yeah, this is, has all the issues, right?
Which was it? Which vehicle?
The Avenger.
So the ask is to purchase this new vehicle, uh, kind of as a replacement for this Avenger?
For the 118.
For the 118.
The 118 basically became unusable. It was patched for the sale, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, that, that, that vehicle would be, uh, I mean, it was, it was costing us so much money just to keep it roadworthy that I had mentioned, I, I don't see how this vehicle can last and that we should probably purchase two vehicles in '24. If you all remember that conversation around six months ago. So it did not make it through to December. And now, now they're down a vehicle.
We did purchase two, correct? Because we purchased the 124 and then we also purchased the Frontier.
The Frontier was an existing vehicle that was a lease and the village purchased it because the lease was up and it was more expensive to purchase a new lease than it was just to buy that one off a lease.
Gotcha. So ideally, what we're trying to get to is to have five patrol vehicles for the police. Is that correct?
Correct. I work for.
But we have four and they're asking for another.
216 is being sold when that's being traded out next year?
So 216 really needs to be replaced also in '25, as I recall. Is that, I mean, that's what we budgeted for was two vehicle replacements. One was for 118 and one is for 216. Those are the two oldest vehicles, other than the Avenger. But frontline vehicles, those are the oldest two.
And the PD admin focus?
So that's not really, it's.
That's not a PD vehicle.
Really a PD vehicle. It's really an admin vehicle that has lights. But it's not, it was used, I think, for code enforcement.
Yes.
My memory is that they were taking it to the range as well, where to court from the last conversation.
Gets driven occasionally just so it doesn't rot, but yeah.
It would probably be between that and the Avenger, is that fair to say?
So.
I mean, I've driven the Focus to stop too, so it's not just the PD. When there's a lot of specific functions, it's, you know, my car is not available, so I will drive that.
So in this current budget this year?
Yes.
We have what, two vehicles or one?
One.
Okay. And we already spent that?
Correct.
And then, and purchase the lease buyout?
Correct, which is also budgeted for.
With drug funds.
Correct. Also.
And then in next year's budget that we just finished the appropriations, we have two.
Two. Both of those are, the earmarked vehicles are the ones in red that you see in front of you.
Okay. But then you're adding in the Tahoe, which is not in this list.
Well, the Tahoe replaces 118.
Okay.
So technically is in the list. We just are down a vehicle.
Okay.
There's, there's 10 listed here, but it's, we really have nine. So is that, any other questions on that?
So there's no passing by is really next year's budget.
It's all that, yeah. I mean, the payment's not going to be made until January. There's no.
It's part of those two cars. We're not.
It would be the first of the two cars, correct?
This will be specifically for patrol.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is a patrol vehicle.
That's what I understand, but I don't want to put words in.
This is a marked patrol vehicle.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification and putting it down on a piece of paper that I could actually see it and understand it.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
So is this committee in favor of moving forward with the purchase?
So, yeah, that information's in your packet. That's the legal packet here, which is $75,000. Authorization, purchase price for the vehicle, I believe, is 54. Plus it's approximately $20,000 outfit plus decals, which is where we got the 75.
Are we taking out a loan on that?
I'm sorry?
Are we taking out a loan?
Yes. This would be another US bank loan. That's the amortization schedule is the last page of your, of your document?
I think this particular one, Eric, if you can tell me if I'm correct. Um, this one that they found in Cleveland is through Ohio Buys. It was actually like $6,000 less.
Yes.
Than the one we were looking at over in Corrine.
Correct. We had one that we had found locally and then Rob went to, through the Ohio Buy system, which is basically pre-negotiated prices that, that dealerships can participate in with the state of Ohio and it's a lower bid than what you can normally get on a, on a car. So that's, that's where that number 54 comes from.
Do we know why it was returned?
I'm sorry. I'm incorrect. It's $49,000.
Yeah, $49,000.
I'm sorry. I, yeah, I apologize. That's what I should have just looked. No, there's no, but it has the same warranties. It has the warranties of a new car.
I could tell you often, agencies, because it's so difficult to get police cars, there's a, there's a window where you can bid or order vehicles. And a lot of times agencies will order vehicles. They know they have the availability to get it, but then it's up to the council to decide if they want it or not. And sometimes these are canceled.
Who's saying no? Wow.
And Chief, this is comparable to a Ford Explorer?
Yes. Yes, this price, when I learned this price, it's a really good price for this vehicle.
Are you happy with this deal?
It can always be less, but yeah. I trust Captain Reed to build these out really well, too.
So is another thing that the, that this, this vendor showed us, you know, their bill in Cleveland, but Captain Reed made it very clear that if anything goes wrong, it's going to be very hard to get that vehicle to Cleveland to fix. So generally speaking, we have it built locally as a company, which is, we use, I think it's every single vehicle that we outfitted is on through MobileCom, the police department.
Same price?
I mean, it's $400 cheaper to do it locally.
I like that. Okay. I might make a motion to move this up to council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion here that we're running late on, was a discussion about the OPRS. That's a pension for, last time, or two times ago, we approved for the police department was having issues finding police officers and we were just not competitive with the market. So we had to go ahead and add on pension pickups and to make it that we are on the map, that police officers will look at us. Somehow, it appears that other workers in the village want it also. Now is the discussion is if we go ahead with that or not. I don't believe we're having issues finding staff members for any of our current positions in the village. I think it's more of a that person got something, so I want something also. I would ask the administration, should we have the discussion now or should we push it off?
I mean, just, just a couple of thoughts on it. I know specifically when we're talking about the police, like you mentioned, it was for specific retention and recruitment purposes. And in addition to those purposes, we were, the administration did a great analysis of police, of our police, you know, package versus the package that police in comparable municipalities also received. So before, you know, I think I could even consider this, I think I, I would love to see another sort of comparison, you know, are, is, is there a need where we're behind, you know, comparable positions in other villages? Is there recruitment issues that need to be filled, things like that? So similar to what Mr. Fisher said, I think there's just more information we would need to get on it. You know, are we behind? Are we equivalent? Are we having issues with retention and recruitment? Before we, you know, consider an additional benefit, which I believe in our, correct me if I'm wrong, in our newly approved budget for the new year, did that budget include a pay raise for these individuals as well?
Yeah.
Appropriations?
That's a pretty standard.
Yeah, so, so they're already getting a pay raise. So if, if we are falling behind and this is a need to keep up, you know, I'm happy to consider it. But until such a, something like that's been demonstrated to me, I don't feel comfortable moving it to council.
So one of the things from a human resource aspect that I would advise council on is when you start making differences between classes of employees about how you treat benefits, it becomes a, something that could potentially become an issue for you. So I think it's something you just need to consider. Basically, what you're telling the employee population is that the police officers command higher benefits than do the other employees. It's, it's a perception. It's just something to be aware of and we need to make sure that we know how to be able to address that. When we do, if we do, go ahead and do the pension pickup for the police department.
Oh, I totally hear that. I mean, but there's a difference between, the, with the police, there was a, there was a defined need and an outlined need outlined through research. That outlined the need of increasing it. Here, I haven't, a need hasn't been presented for me, a want has been presented in front of me. And, and I'm, I'm happy to consider it. I just would need more, I would just like more information to see where we stand in relation to other, you know, comparable municipalities and and it's not just a, a, you know, is it, is it a need? It's a need. I'd love to address it. One thing I'd like to add is, as far as the, the OPERS, I think where this conversation started is because when we were discussing this, I asked that we be able to do this for our police clerk. Because there is a lot of competition for police clerks. It's, it's, it's to the point where when somebody knows they're, they're retiring, they know that they're going to take this clerk from this jurisdiction and that jurisdiction knows they're going to take their replacement from this one. It's kind of a game of musical chairs. And Denise's name has been floated in a few of these exchanges when we've had some recent clerk moves. So I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to maintain her because she, her, her position is vital to our PD. Everything runs through her. And when I took over, we were in a process of replacing the clerk that left. And it's, it's very, very difficult to stay on top of things without that position. So that's where, that's where the, the OPERS conversation, I think, started. Was making sure that we don't lose sight of keeping her competitive and keeping her here.
Sure.
Eric, what is the salary increase that we allowed for in the employment by budget, the average?
Um, I believe it's 6%.
Yeah.
And did the police budget?
Well, I'm sorry. You're asking police or you're asking general?
I was asking for general, but now I'm asking for police.
Police was 6%.
Great. I, and then we already approved the increase in the pension pickup for the police, correct?
The.
We talked to the council about the finance approved date.
Correct. You're correct. It has been approved by finance. The legislation is not in place.
Correct. And then what we're talking about now would just be the OPERS and that would affect police and all employees, correct?
OPERS would not affect police.
Like part-time?
I'm sorry. It would affect part-time and, and the clerk. Which that's three, four employees? Three?
Four.
Four.
And then the administration and the service.
Correct.
Correct. So how many employees are we talking about total?
Three, no, I'm sorry. You said four. Or the police, well, Jamie, Fox was it, but I, I wouldn't really, you know, we have all four.
Four in the police department?
Oh, I'm sorry. Plus, uh.
Five.
Five?
Five in total, you say?
Okay. My, my, my opinion is our staff is underpaid. I don't know about police, but I believe our rest of our staff. I think when we went to hire Renee's position, one, it was an issue because we didn't post the salary explicitly, right? But we also, the reason, I could make an assumption that the reason it took so long to fill that position was because we were not paying enough, right?
Exactly right.
So I would vote that we do move forward with this, but I would like more information about what this would actually cost the village.
$6,500. It's on your council packet.
$6,500 total? Is that comparable to what other villages are doing?
It's still less than, I mean, I, again, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, you underpay me because I'm very grateful for my job. However, Gulf Manor is a small municipality and we don't, we don't pay our employees what bigger municipalities do because we don't have that kind of money. Thankfully, we're not in a, we can't, well, we are fiscally responsible though. And in our current situation, smaller increases like this are sustainable. It's $6,500 to cover the rest of the employees. But it's still not, I mean, again, it's still not competitive, but I think it does send the right messaging that we, that our service guys are appreciated, our full-time employees are appreciated, right? It's.
What we likely can't do is sustain a salary increase to actually put these people out to salaries if they didn't get the highlights.
That's for sure. That's for sure.
What we could do is offer this. It's going to be $6,500. We've spent more money on duller things as a village, frankly.
That's not a good reason to spend more.
And I'm saying this, I'm just saying, this shows some appreciation for our staff that actually are not police, right? We've purchased new cars for the police. We've given them raises. They, it's in books. They get more higher raises than the rest of our staff.
I gotta wear this dumb shirt, though.
You can give it to me if you want.
Um, if I can just, if I can just address one thing that you said, and it's really, I want to show that this is universal across the pension pickup concept, is that this is the cheapest way to get more money in our employees' pockets possible, is when you give them a pension pickup, because you're not giving a higher percentage where it then also turns into you have to pay the pensions. This is just the pension, meaning this is a line item on, on a paycheck, which is just a deduction, right? So you make, whatever you make, $25, $30 an hour, right? That, that deduction goes towards OPERS. Is something that public employees have to pay. That's something which reduces their, the pickup brings them back to where.
But doesn't reduce it to get it back?
If they, if they finish the terms. No, I mean, if they don't hit their, if they don't hit their pensions, they lose it. Right? If, if an employee is terminated or if the, if the employee doesn't, you know, if it goes in the traditional pension pen and doesn't work 20 years, they don't see a dime. They, well, they see, you know, that's, that might not be true. They may get back, they get back, they get back to what they put in. They don't see the growth. So it's true. They, they do get that money back. That's true.
As I said, I'm open to it. I just would love to see comparable information just so we can, you know, I just want to see more information.
So we have two options at the table. Either we could go ahead and allow council to vote on this tonight. And then we could just reassure ourselves with some more information at next meeting, or we could push it up to the next meeting.
My recommendation is that we vote to approve this and have it in front of council tonight. And that next year when this comes up, because it will, we ask for more information ahead of time. So that we have comparable to what it, what are village clerks, what are police clerks, all of those service, what are they being paid in other municipalities?
Can I clarify? You're asking for next year when the discussion for appropriations takes place and there's a discussion of raises, what are comparable salaries?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that request.
So I'll say as somebody of council though, and not of finance, the first question I want to ask is, so we can afford it and all I need to hear is yes?
Um, yes. I think $6,500.
So I would be comfortable voting tonight on that.
Okay, fine. So the consensus that I'm feeling is that you put forth a motion to move this up to council. Do you agree, Mr. Michael?
I'm open to moving to council. I'd, I'd still like to see more information.
So instead of waiting to next year, could you get us by the next meeting some information that we know we're comfortable with our decision?
Of comparable municipalities?
Of what can we do?
I can, I can put, right, yeah, I can put out a survey request through the central local government. They're typically open for two weeks and then they give us results of what, what those positions are being paid.
That, with that?
The spread would probably be between five and 10 different municipalities locally, which, I mean, there's about 50, so that would give me 10%.
So our goal here this evening is to try and pass the police portion as is current at the beginning of the new year. Next Monday, I believe, is pay period one of 2025. So are we trying to do this in?
So what we, we are.
To do anybody at once?
So we're going to move both of them up to council to get approved for the beginning of next year, is my, is the consensus over here. With a contingency that we would do want to see the norm, just to keep us up to date of what's really going on. That's the consensus that we have over here.
Do you want to motion?
Um, yes.
Great. I will move that we move resolution number 2024-19 and 2024-20 to full council approval.
Second.
Those were ordinances or resolutions? I apologize.
Uh, resolutions.
19 and 20?
Yes. Yes. Do you want to do it all in favor?
Was there a second, I apologize?
Yeah, I second it. Zach, are you good with that?
Aye.
He did it, he just looked at you, you were supposed to know, you wanted to know.
Uh, when it comes about, talking about this, there's also other conversations that have about people being underpaid, um, I think we'll bring that up the next council, the next, um, finance committee. Purpose of motion, oh, our next meeting is January twenty-seventh at six PM. Purpose of motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You? We should have started earlier.
Right, right, right.
And we should have started right after yours.